Good evening, everyone. It's time to begin tonight's Board of Trustees meeting. Please stand before the leaders.
The Fire Department of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. I'll inform the Service members. Good evening, and thank you all for attending tonight's meeting. As a reminder, the Board of Trustees meets only once during the summer. My inaugural board meeting will be held on August 18th at 7:30 PM in the boardroom and also via Zoom. Let's begin tonight's meeting with the oath of office for two members of the police department. I'd like to call on Commissioner Jackson, who will read the bio for Police Officer Michael Punch, who's being promoted as a police sergeant. Commissioner Jackson, to the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Michael Punch is a 12-year veteran of the Golden City Police Department. He's being promoted today as to the rank of sergeant. He grew up in a military family, originally from Colorado. He lived in five states as well as England. After graduating, went to high school. He earned a bachelor's degree from Hoshun University. He joined the NYPD in 2004, and he was assigned to the 73rd Precinct. During his tenure, he was decorated more than 60 times. He joined the Golden City Police Department in 2010 and has served in the patrol and traffic divisions. He has proven to be an effective communicator, investigator, and patrol officer, which I feel will help him in transition to supervisor ranks. And he was one of the officers I always went to when we had something was going on on post. He was the guy to go to because he knew everybody on his post. So I believe he's going to give that talent to the next officers, like Officer Rosa today, as a learning job. And I think he'll be a very good asset to this village.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. And just I'd like to have Michael Punch come up to the dais. So I'd administer the oath of office. For the motion of signing the sergeant.
Aye, aye. Congratulations, Michael Punch. I proudly swear in the sound of the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of New York, the Constitution of the State of New York, and the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City. The laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City. And I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police sergeant of the Garden City Police Department. The duties of a police sergeant of the Garden City Police Department. To the best of my abilities. To the best of my abilities. Congratulations.
Commissioner, would you want one for three or no? Yeah. So I just think you go back, yeah. And Deputy Mayor.
Congratulations.
Okay, now we can continue with the next oath of office. Commissioner Jackson, again, you have the pleasure of reading the bio for Police Officer Peter Rosa.
Thank you, Mayor. We are excited to announce our new officer for the Golden City Police Department, Peter Rosa. He served five years at NYPD. He was assigned to patrol division and has experience working well in emergency services unit, counterterrorism unit, and strategic response group. He grew up in Long Beach and after graduating high school, enlisted in the United States Navy, where his honorary discharge in 2015. Attended St. John's University, where he returned a bachelor's degree in homeland security. He continues to reside in Long Beach. During his interest into due process, he really blew us away with his knowledge. And we have some friends in the city and really excited that they're getting it done. So we hope that's true, and we really feel that he'll be another asset to the village.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Now, Police Officer Peter Rosa, please move to the dais. And Deputy Mayor Tom O'Brien is going to administer the oath of office.
I swear you in, and we're very proud to have you represent us. Thank you. So raise your hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Peter Rosa.
Just solemnly swear
Sorely swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
Support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And the laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
The laws and ordinances of the Village of Garden City.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of a police officer with the Garden City Police Department.
Okay, discharge duties of a police officer with the Village of Garden City.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
By the powers vested in me as the Deputy Mayor of the Village of Garden City, I declare you duly appointed as a new officer in the Garden City Police Department. Congratulations. Family, friends. Anybody from Peter, come on up.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, President, Police Officer Rosa. On behalf of the village, I would like to welcome you to the Garden City Police Department, wishing the best of luck as you embark on your career for the police department in Garden City. But he left already. Yes, he's going to party. I would like to continue by calling upon the department heads to get in with Commissioner Jackson. And have the head of the floor again.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. Today, the Fire Department responded to a very bad fire due to lightning. Though I believe it was a similar one in a tall place. They did an excellent job. We assisted them, but they really impressed me a lot with their able to extinguish a fire that was in a very hard place to control. So I just want to congratulate them on their job well done. Also, stone cars and burglaries are still very prevalent in Nassau County. We've had, you know, Algonwood has been pretty quiet with us on nose fronts. I believe people are starting to lock their cars up at a much higher pace, and I do appreciate that. And just remember, make sure your lights are on at night. Make sure you have alarm system used. And also keep your boss out of the car. Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Next, Fire Chief Paul.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. We have nothing on the formal agenda. However, we'd just like to give an update. For the month of June, the department responded to 73 total alarms, 60 of which were signalates, which, as many of you are aware, are lesser alarms, automatic alarms, carbon monoxide, things of such nature, seven generals, and six mutually calls to surrounding departments. As the Commissioner mentioned a few moments ago, the department did respond and operate at a house fire this afternoon. The cause of origin is believed to be a lightning strike into the attic. The department was on scene in under a minute and was able to contain it to the room of origin. Extensive overhaul did commence to ensure that it did not spread to any other rooms in the house. And the scene was put under control in less than an hour. Happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Thank you very much.
If I may, I saw pictures of the fire. Well done, Chief. And also I see the chief's back there. Chief Moody, I know you were one of the respondents. Thank you very much for keeping everyone safe in the police department as well. Terrific job, as always.
Yeah, if I just may add, I'd like to thank the police department and the NYU ambulance service. Our partnership has been fantastic over the years. And again, their support on scene has always been incredible. So thank you again.
Just curious, where was it located, Chief Paul?
Center of town, a couple minutes from fire headquarters.
Good. Thank you.
Also, I know you responded to some terrible accidents, and we saved some people. Congratulations to both departments.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you for that. Next is Village Superintendent Reed.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and trustees. Tonight on the agenda, item number one, appropriation of termination reserves. This is board authorization. It's being requested to appropriate $60,785 from the reserve for compensated abscences for two employees who left village service. Item number two, appropriation of revenues for the police department. Every year, you know, we bring to the board a request to appropriate funding that the police department receives for forfeiture of crime proceeds. They receive when they're working in conjunction with other municipalities. And in the reserve, they have $53,677. Per by law, they're to use these funds for unbudgeted purposes. So they're requesting to appropriate that in this year's budget so that they can utilize this funding. Now, item number three is a correction of errors by the assessor. So this is a request by the village assessor to amend the village's final assessment role. The village was unaware that the property located on 555 Stewart Avenue had requested and received a pilot agreement from the Nassau County IDA. So the village included this property as a fully taxable property on the tax rolls. We sent out a tax bill. We actually received the tax payment, but we also received the pilot payment from Nassau County IDA. So we're requesting to refund the tax payment and convert this property into a net property on the assessment roll. I also want to note that as a result of this, we also discovered that there was an agreement signed between the village and the property owner back in March of 2021, that the property owner didn't make the village whole. The difference between the amount the village would have received in property taxes and the IDA payment. So the village is being made whole throughout this pilot agreement, which spans 20 years. Okay?
Do you know the amount of that?
So the way the pilots work, it's an incremental amount. So for this year, because the property is not fully developed yet, the taxes on that property for this year was $21,000. And, you know, the pilot agreement covered the full amount for the first year, covered that full amount. But over the span of 20 years, that goes up to, I believe, $1.5 million. So the village will be receiving the difference of the IDA payment and the actual taxes that would have been assessed.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Items number four and five are transfers that will be covered by Mr. Swazi. And also, I want to let the board know that this week, we received the second payment from the ARPA funds, the American Rescue Plan Act. As you may recall, last year, the village was given $2.3 million from ARPA funds. We received the first half payment last July. And this week, we received the second half payment of $1,151,000. And so, you know, those funds are available for capital projects, which the board has approved a few projects already from those funds. So we'll continue to update the board on that.
Great, that's good news. Is that it, Mayor?
I love that report this week.
Everything is in the first column. This is great. Next, Building Superintendent Giuseppe Giugnalo.
Good evening, Mayor, Board of Trustees. I have nothing on the actual formal agenda tonight, but if the board has any questions for me to answer, I'd be more than happy to help out and answer.
Thank you, Giuseppe. Excuse me.
The question I had was, it was... It's up. The question I had is, it was my understanding that the famous fence around St. Paul's had at one time gone up because of a danger of flying roof tiles, things of that nature. Having just completed the roof and sealed it in tight, what is the purpose of keeping the fence up going forward? Because it would certainly make a significant difference over the near future if the fence were not up there and the grounds were properly cared for while the public makes the decision in a November referendum. So that was my question. Has this been considered and rejected by your department? Or is it because the roof has just been finalized that no one has taken up that issue?
Can I make a comment?
Excellent.
I think it was the Achilles to keep up the videographers.
That's right.
Well, those videographers are a problem.
That's part of it.
Yeah.
Just to add to that, also, one of the reasons was the water infiltration into the building. The second reason was just the vandalism of the building on the inside. Because if you ever walk through the building, it's been vandalized ever so deeply inside. There's false graffiti, stolen property, everything else like that. So the building now is secure. Plywood and everything else is secured around the building. I do, hopefully, the village can actually keep the fence there for that purpose and also the purpose of Phase B to this project as far as any stone or brick that's actually, you know, coming off the building. So there is still a safety factor. All right, that'll be handled hopefully in the next phase of this project.
There's a safety factor of danger to people who walk near it?
No, the fence will protect any stolen, any fallen stone or, you know, bricks that may deteriorate in time and half.
Are you saying there's a continuing danger despite the fact that the roof is done?
Yes, yes.
All right, fine, that answers my question.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the trustees? No?
Just one thing, one more thing, Mayor, before I forget. The amnesty program does end next week. And if anybody has any outstanding crimes they wish to follow, please do so.
It depends where you are. Good. Okay, next is Recreation Commissioner Paul Blake. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Recreation has four items on the agenda this evening. Number 11, acceptance of maintenance bond. This bond covers the work that was recently done in the Washington Park tennis courts. Basically, an 18-month warranty on the work in case anything goes bad and the contract will come back and they put on it. Number 12, attendance at the National Recreation of Parks Association Conference upcoming September. We try to go every year to this conference. It's a very valuable one. There are about 80 educational sessions and some other great off-site programs. Going on, number 13, award of bid. This is for new safety surfaces at the St. Paul's Playground right outside. The existing ported place rubber is at the end of its useful life. And we are going to replace it with the same type that we used over at Edgemere, which is a synthetic turf with the rubber underneath it. Bits came a little higher than we expected. And that was due to having to replace some asphalt. It was not noted in the first estimate. And an additional 2,500 square feet of surfacing. We want to make sure that we get the job done right. There is enough money in the safety surface fund. We are going to push off the Talmore surface, which is in good condition for another year. Also, we're concerned that the pricing has probably gone up on that one as well. We'd like to make sure we get it right before we come to you for that job. Number 14, award of bid for ice cream products. This is something that we had not expected. Normally, at the pool, we purchase about $12,000 worth of ice cream products each year for sale. And this year, when we went out for pricing, much to our surprise, the estimates came back at $32,000 for the exact same products as last year. The ice cream prices have spiked ridiculously. So we could not purchase enough ice creams to get through the entire summer and stay under the bid limit. So we had to quickly write up some specs. We had great cooperation from the finance and purchasing department. And we are looking to award the bid tonight to our regular vendor, All-Star Specialties. The bid amount is $32,000, but this is on as-needed basis. I do not anticipate spending that entire $32,000 this year. That's all we have on the agenda. Some other news, however, you might find of interest, we're having a very nice season at the pool. And compliments are coming in, and the place is running very well. But what's even nicer is we have exceeded our membership projections in every category except one. Not only have we exceeded the projections for this year, we have exceeded what we did on the last non-COVID year of 2019. So we seem to have the ship moving in the right direction. And kudos to all the people that work at the pool every day. They're doing a tremendous job. And residents and members seem pleased. So I'm very happy to report those items.
That's good news.
I should have a question for Paul. Well, I had a conversation with Hank Roder. I know you did as well. Can you tell them about the ash tree problem?
Sure. There is an ongoing problem throughout the country with an insect called the Emerald Ash Borer. It is a small beetle-type insect which gets into ash trees and drills into the feed stream of the tree and kills the tree. There is no pesticide that can kill this bug. There is no preventative, and there is no cure. We anticipate that every ash tree in the village and on Long Island will eventually fall to this insect. So what we're looking at now is having to remove somewhere between 100 and maybe as many as 200 ash trees throughout the village. So we will be coming to the board, actually, with a plan either on a bid or an emergency declaration to bring someone in to take down these trees. We have counted, we've taken out about 35 trees in the last month, ash trees. There are, couldn't get these numbers wrong. There are 19 ash trees on Washington Avenue, all of which are dead or dying, will have to come down. They're too big for our tree crew to handle. There are 11 ash trees on Nassau Boulevard in the median that are dead or dying, all have to come down. There are close to a dozen on Franklin Avenue, same condition, same thing on Clinton Road. In addition, there are some ash trees over on Main Avenue, and they are scattered throughout the village. There are some in the east section over on Menno Street. And we're watching them just go one by one. And there really is nothing that can be done. There is a park district somewhere in Texas that has come up with a plan. I'm not sure how sensible this is. They're considering importing another type of beetle, which is the predator beetle, to the Emerald Ash Borer. But you can all see where this is going.
It's biological warfare.
What is that beetle going to get into? You know, this beetle kills ash trees. If we bring over a beetle that kills that beetle that kills oak trees, we haven't helped ourselves. So I'm going to let the good people in Texas try this one, and they can report back to me. But that's where we are with the ash trees. It's a serious problem, and we are going to have to address it over the next, you know, six to 18 months. It's going to be ongoing.
Thank you. Paul, could village personnel take care of taking down those trees? Or is it just too many to do?
We're taking down the ones that we can, Trusty Chester. Our tree crew is limited to medium-sized trees at best. We can't handle the trees on Main Thoroughfares, the ones on Washington, Franklin, Clinton. They're just too big. But as I mentioned, we have taken down 30, 35 or 36 ash trees in the past four or five weeks. The guys are going around, when they spot a tree they can handle, they stop, they take it down. You know, we're fitting them in around our normal calls from residents to prune a tree, take a tree out, all those kinds of things. But we're going to need help on this one. It's just too many trees.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions?
Commissioner Blake, thank you very much for addressing that early heard swim issue during the week. Appreciate it.
I'm glad, we have to do that.
Thank you. Next, Public Works Superintendent Anthony DeRosa. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, trustees. Tonight, public works has several items on the agenda. First one being maintenance bond, emerging contaminant removal for wells number eight and 12. Board authorization is requested to accept the maintenance bond from Philip Rossonis Reeves, who is the contractor for the emerging contaminant removal for wells eight and 12. This guarantees for 18 months the work completed from the date of acceptance of the bond. The bond is in the amount of $5,242,167. Village Council has refused the maintenance bond and approves it as a form. Next on the agenda is a change order for Edgemere Road Firehouse, Phase 1A. Board authorization is requested to approve change order PC 06, revision 01 for Garden City Fire Station Number 2, Edgemere Road Firehouse, submitted by Avery Holstman Incorporated in the amount of $130,038. This includes $5,000 allowance for exterior light fixture replacement parts, and it's being charged to capital budget. Next item is a change order for the Old Country Road Tank Replacement. Board authorization is requested to approve change order number four, submitted by H2M Architects and Engineers on behalf of Callwell Tanks Incorporated in the amount of $29,398.27. This bid was awarded at the December 19th, 2017 BOT meeting at $6,738. The revised amount, including change orders, is totaling $928,510.46 and is now $7,626,510.46. And this is coming out of the capital budget. Next up is the Garden City Library Children's Room renovation. Board authorization is requested to award the bid to Preferred Construction Incorporated for a total cost of $963,125. Funds for this project shall be used as follows. $68,000 from the Library HBAC capital accounts and $895,125 from the Library Children's Room capital account. This is being charged to the capital account. Next on the agenda, we have Mason Reef facade restoration and new roof system at Village Hall. Board authorization is requested to reject the bid from Creative Builders Incorporated. They were the lowest bidder. As they submitted an incomplete bid, we're asking to reject the bid, the authorization to reject the bid because they submitted an incomplete bid. Board authorization is requested to award to Cornerstone Restoration Group for a total cost of $536,000. Funds for this project shall be used as follows. $114,880 from the Village Hall Roof Capital Account and $421,120 will be used from the Village Hall Repointing Capital Account. This will be charged to the capital account. Next on the agenda is the Village Hall HBAC renovation. Board authorization is requested to award the bid to Intricate Tech Solutions. They were the lowest bidder for a total cost of $729,000, and this is also coming out of the capital budget. and this is also coming out of the capital budget. Next on the agenda is Brick Wall Reconstruction Nassau Boulevard Railroad Parking Lot. Board authorization is requested to reject the bid from the Indoor American Group Incorporated. They were a little bitter, and they did not meet the specifications. Board authorization is requested to award the bid to Cornerstone Restoration Group Corporation. They were the second lowest bidder. They came in at a total cost of $153,600. This will be coming out of the capital budget. Next up is rubbish removal. National Waste Services LLC, this is a renewal. Board authorization is requested to exercise the first renewal-year option contained in the competitively bid contract under the same terms and conditions for rubbish removal that was awarded on July 15th to National Waste Services LLC at the same prices and conditions for the items to be ordered on an as-needed basis based upon unit costs. And this will be charged to operating budget. Next up is rubbish removal, and this is Jamaica Ash and Rubbish Removal Corporation. Board authorization is requested to exercise the first renewal-year option contained in the competitively bid contract under the same terms and conditions for rubbish removal that was awarded on July 15th to Jamaica Ash and Rubbish Removal at the same prices and conditions for items to be ordered on an as-needed basis based upon unit cost. And this will be charged to operating budget. Do you have any questions? Do you have to answer?
I don't know if I should ask this question to you and to you, too. Andrew Zeppe, can you describe the scope of work for the change order for the Community Firehouse?
Yes. Yes, Mayor, I can do that. I just want to actually start from the beginning and just give a little highlight and some color on how this occurred. The actual amount, the awarded project was $1,250,000. If we break everything down from the beginning, Cameron Engineers, $116,000, Par Environmental, $2,550,000, and Seaborn, Aver, and Holstman, their project amount was $377,68, which did include $100,000 contingency for electrical work. Okay? The current project, today, which was used, $642,268. That's not including this change order. Once we include this change order, $130,038, if we prove it tonight, their total amount will be $772,306. All right, that's $772,306, or reference to the awarded amount for $1,250,000. So, the total savings in that is $477,694, savings on that total budget. Just a highlight on the actual change order itself. After going through the change orders that did come in, I told the contractor, I mentioned to him to give me one, the final change order price, which allocated everything that was discussed on off-site visit. Well, with Mr. DeRosa, Mr. Swasey, the contractor, and the consultant Cameron Engineers. So, that change order included some facade tiebacks with the steel angle to hold back the second layer of brick that was in the back of the facade, which created for aesthetics. That was actually almost laminating from the back of the facade. So, that was part of that scope. The rear south staircase that goes to the second floor, this Melastio staircase, actually pulled away from the facade of the building with the brick. So, that's to anchor that staircase properly, because the fire department does use that staircase. So, anchor that staircase back. During the abatement project, Par Environmental actually removed some of the corking and ceiling from windows, actually, part of the facade, and some flashing that they bent back. So, that has to be replaced. Now, we're going to get water infiltration back into the building. We're trying to prevent that. So, that has to be done. Part of the doghouse roofs are detailed on the facade, which is on the north side and eastern west side of the building. The slate roof has to be pulled back about two layers, and that's got to be reconstructed, because currently, there's some water infiltration on that. So, that's got to be flashed properly and put back. Actually, one more item is the actually tower roof. There's two drains on that tower roof. One drain we're going to try eliminate and cap, and we're going to use the current drain that's there right now to make that more active. And the final project, the final change order is, there was a gas leak in that building. So, I directed the contractor to cap, cut and cap the existing gas line until Phase B would commence, and then we can take it from there. All right? So, including that budget, price is also the $30,000 plus the $5,000 for the additional electrical fixtures, which if we choose to change the fixtures on that building, we can do so. If not, it's just going to be deducted from the total price.
But with the change order, we're still below budget?
We are, with included change order, we are savings in the budget, $477,694.
I have a question on the Firehouse. What is the status of that engineering report we were waiting on, which I think was important for deciding what future plans?
If you would like, we can answer, I can.
Sure. As everyone knows, that the Firehouse at Edgemere, I guess, has many different layers to what needs to be done. And I am pleased to report that this afternoon, I got the draft report from Old Structures Engineering, in which, to put it bluntly, the building has good bones. And there are a number of different plans and suggestions how we can change that building to implement part of the recommendations from the Fire Safety Committee. And that would be to enable a truck and an engine to both be housed at that quarters and be able to implement part of the renovation or the renovation of that building. So, the answer is the draft report came this afternoon. It is in the process of being evaluated. And we intend to move forward with the exploration on how we can, in fact, bring that building back online for the fire department. There are a couple of different avenues that are being explored with regard to what the number and type of equipments that can be placed in there. But obviously, there is consultation with the fire chiefs that is necessary so that we can make certain that whatever we do is done in the right way, with the right equipment, with the right sizes. We don't want to have what happened to me when I was in school, when the mayor backed the fire truck into the garage. The garage was four feet short, and he backed the fire truck into the wall. So, we're going to try to make sure we don't have that happen. So, this mayor does it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Anything else? Okay, let's go on to now to Lieutenant Ross Swasey. And I will say something while, happy birthday.
Good evening, there, trustees. I couldn't spend my birthday with a fine group of people.
That is possible.
Is that why you're leaving early?
Yeah. I thought you even had a drink. So, Mayor, I wanted to first advise the board and the public that the water tank is officially able to go back into service, although we started filling it quite a few weeks ago. Because we had only three wells operating out of our nine wells in the city, one third of our capacity, and we had very early start the ceremony on hot days, we couldn't fill the tank and maintain water supply and fire safety. We couldn't fill it fast enough. So, we filled it partially, we had to dump it because the water gets stale inside churn. We filled it almost three times. But finally, the samples, bacterial samples, which the Health Department requested two samples of, and the organic compounds, again, two samples of. They were all passed successfully because of delay at the labs here on the island. And one of the organics has to be sent to Florida to be done. Don't ask me why, I'll look at that different, another time. Nonetheless, the Health Department gave us a call on Monday, put into service. We are still working off of system pressure, not atmospheric pressure, because the tank has to hook up electronically to the SCADA system. So, the levels are monitored. So, we're still working off boost of pressure. Nonetheless, we're almost there. And the inter-tank with Hempstead was closed last Wednesday. I want to thank John Reinhardt, the Water Supervisor of Hempstead, for allowing us to follow up with this tank, which helped us maintain our pressure besides our system pressure. On the west side of town, at least, doesn't make help. So, that's about the water tank. I want to mention, tonight, we're awarding five capital projects. Mr. DeFensisco, I'm sorry, Mr. DeRosa, mentioned five projects. I want to just tell you that the actual cost of those projects in total dollars is $1,704,000. The budget for those projects is $3,212,635. So, as with the Edgemere Firehouse, some of your savings are there. These savings here are over $1,500,000. We got very good prices. I think the repointing project here, which is budgeted $1,515, is coming in $536 with the roof. I think cutting those parts together helped that. So, and this is a special note, I think, to trustee Deegan, who we have a phone call tomorrow with, Chairman DeBoe. We ended the last fiscal year, May 31st, with about $20 million budget. And then we added 4.7 on June 1st with the new budget here. So, we were almost $25 million. Right now, before these awards, we're sitting at $22,124,000. And after these awards, we're sitting at $20,420,000, a significant decrease. But if you take in the full cost of the budgets, how we spent them, it really goes out to like $18,900,000. So, to that promise I made, you do a budget session, sir? We're getting, I'm trying to get down to single digits under ten. And next week, in the August 18th meeting right now, we opened three projects this week, and they all came under budget as well. So, the trend is continuing, and I'm hoping to have four or five projects on the 18th. But we are definitely finally making a dent in all these projects. And we're going to renew this for them. So, I think that's great news for the village, and it makes the money available back to surplus or toward other projects that may or may not need the money. That's my update for the seat, Mayor. And thank you for the birthday wishes, I appreciate it.
Is this your time?
I said, let Mr. DeRosa handle it.
Any comments, questions?
Just terrific work on the savings. I commend everybody.
Thank Mr. DeRosa, engineer John Reinhardt as well, the whole engineering team, actually, and Anthony as well. It's really a team effort, and the finance team is also helping us.
A little push from me.
And the mayor is our consultant. They've been a great help as well.
Thank you.
And Terry, of course. Thank you, Terry.
Terry. He's on the budget side.
You're right.
No, that's the budget guy.
He promised he can, we're getting there.
Okay, let's open up to some citizen comments. Are there any citizen comments on agenda items? On agenda items, please come up to the podium, state your name and address.
Hi, Paul Rockenbauer, 316 Tennessee Road, Garden City. Paul, I'm underway. Paul, pick up the mic. Yeah, sorry.
How's your back?
Hanging in there. What I found is put together at the suggestion of trustee Mr. Torino, suggesting that we do something to go through kind of quickly of the status of what we're talking about on Main Avenue and re-greening Maryland Avenue. I'd like to start with what the problem is. And the first picture that we're going to show is, this is what the neighbors are saying at night, coming from Roxbury, Houston, Meadbrook, and Wellington Road. That's the lights that were so much. If you go to the next slide.
That was kind of quite bright.
Oh, if you want to stay back and look at it.
Get those lights a little bit. I was going to share her.
It's looking up at the end of each person's block, and it's very, very bright. And the shrubbery that's going to be added as part of the contract does not go above the platform level on any side of the station. So, there is no real blockage coming from the existing contract. So, that's why we're looking to do something a little different. Next slide. This was my hand-drawn picture that kind of started the process. The drawing on the upper is Maryland Avenue Station as it exists. The lower is where we're saying perhaps we could shut off Houston Road. Where you'll see right above Houston Road. And we increased the number of parking spots that are in there. And then going back towards Meadbrook on the left-hand side of the drawing. On the left-hand side of the drawing, we're talking about coming about 400 or 500 feet in length and about 20 feet wide to provide a green area. One of the areas that has to come down has ash trees in it, right, Paul? So, the trees will be coming down that are already out there. As a result of this, we've had some meetings internally. We've came to the board before, and the board suggested we get a petition put together. Bill McCandless, probably going to speak later, put this together. He's a better artist than I am, but it basically shows what the improvements would be in the station. Where we would have traffic flow, where we'd get the increase in shrubbery. The next picture, I don't spend a lot of time, I don't have much time to have with me. But each one of these was on the second page explaining why we're doing what we're doing. We're trying to block the light, we're trying to block the sound. We suggested adding a stop sign. We put at the end of the street where the mailbox is, a loop track, a loop turn. It's going back to rural days. A loop turn where you can go back onto Main Avenue on the north side. This was brought around by a bunch of volunteers in the next slide. We went out and did it one evening. This is, this slide and the next slide is just from Houston Road alone. And there's thirty-some-odd signatures on there saying that they agree with this concept. The total signatures that we got was 130-something. We didn't go back to anybody that was missing. They weren't there. We didn't follow up on it. Conversation with the mayor at one point felt that 50 was probably good enough, so we didn't push it any further. We also limited strictly from Main Avenue to Somerset and the four blocks. I'm not signing on that, even though I agree that it should be done. My neighbors want to sign it, they're not on it. So, we have a lot more people that are interested in it, but that doesn't reflect it all there. The next slide. During the process of submitting my hand-drawn drawings to the village, Stan Tech, who's a consultant for 3TC, the contractor, came back with two ideas on how to re-green the two islands that exist there right now, between Nassau Boulevard and Houston Road, and Houston and Wellington. I'm guessing, right?
Yes.
Right? Yeah. And they were sent to Giuseppe. Giuseppe sent them out to us, and Cecilia Peterson, who's a registered landscape arborist.
Let's see, block of that.
There we go. Thank you. She took exception to it, that she didn't like the plants that were chosen. And I also agree with the plants that were chosen would not do much of a blockage. The other thing I want to mention, that greening these two areas does nothing to block the street view at night, which is what the people are really, really concerned about. So, our next concept, as a result of giving the drawings to the village, we came back with two different drawings. This one allows the Houston Road to be blocked. You'll see on the north side of the island, there's diagonal parking. They put in safe crosswalks in a couple of different locations. And then as you go west, they left the one island in there with a minimal amount of width to do some planting. The next slide, this was another option where they were looking at, and this is something we hadn't suggested, but this is what the village came up with and is offered, and we appreciate their effort in doing this. They're saying that this could become a, on the south side of the islands, it could become two-way traffic all the way from Nassau Boulevard to Townes Pond Road. A little shaking his head.
No, no.
I hadn't got anybody really supporting it. But what we did do, and I'd like to pass out. Want to Giuseppe, and I'm guessing for all the board members, if you get a chance to look at it a little bit later, because everybody's on the basis there. The next slide, then, is we took the two pieces that were put together by the village and combined them. So, what we're saying is we can block off Houston that they had before. I believe that we can add more handicap sparking spots into location that is there. So, we put up an additional 23, went from 11 to 23. On the north side, you'll see that there's two yellow sections that are two yellow sections that are up there that spell out where parking can be held already. To the right, we added something that wasn't there. The handicap ramp comes down from the station where it's kind of colored out in yellow with my scribble. And perhaps that could be a handicap spot there. It would certainly be a place where they could pick up a person in a wheelchair confined in an easier means. What I realized that I didn't add, and it's on here, there's another handicap ramp that comes down at Roxbury and that's something we have to consider on how they would cross the street there as well. So we kept the right-hand side the same as it is. You have the loop that you're able to go around from Main if you're at the mailbox to go back on the west side. You come out at Wellington. And a nice feature that the village did here that I wasn't able to do before is, as you're going north on Wellington, because of this design, you can block part of the station as well. And it happens to be the station that at that part is the big ugly gray building that nobody knows what it is. That would block it looking north. And then going to the left side of that, or going west, we talked about keeping that 400 or 500 foot long extension, 20 feet wide. And then we suggested that we add the parallel parking in there, which would give an additional 12 spots. So the net change in parking spots, I believe is plus two, plus the possibility of handicap spots. This has been talked with a lot of neighbors. I haven't really gotten any negative feedback yet, I don't think. And I think what we're trying to do is make this happen. Part of, been talking to the folks from the MTA, I keep getting the same question that we have 1.6 million available. When is Garden City going to ask for it? And I'm assuming that we don't lose it and I hope we don't lose it. I also believe in my heart, when we all fill out these survey charts, if they don't earn their bonus, that money goes back into the community fund. I believe there's more money in the community fund that's available that we should be asking for, pursuing on that. It's also my understanding that they're going to be repaying the streets and any changes, we would like to see done at the same time, rather than repay the street and then change something. That's kind of it for me, I think.
I have a question for Ralph Swaz. Ralph, in addition to modifications to the road, do the villagers pay for these modifications or does, do we get the money back from the MTA?
I don't, I assume, I don't know the answer, mayor, I have to check. I assume that the community fund would contribute to this, that it wouldn't be on the.
Will we use that money for?
I believe so, yes. I don't think, 3TC is not going to do it because they like this. They're going to take it from the MTA funds. I also, I wanted to mention, Mr. Rockenbauer, I'm glad you're moving around as bad as a rock. That was my birthday wish. I want to mention that there's a lot of possibilities up here. I actually didn't like the two-way one and I'm sorry they showed it to you. I thought I mixed that. But Mr. Givell and Engineer Veroni, maybe Engineer Tom, look at another variety of things here. So it's not either or. I think there are a lot of solutions here that can work with blocking the light. So, Mr. General, you have a.
Yes, there's actually four more options. Paul, thank you for your hard work and helping the design team. There's actually four more renditions of the design concepts for Maryland Avenue. If you can bring up Concept D and go from there, just an add-on. Let's keep in mind, these are all concepts.
What we have here.
Can you explain that to the general public? What differences between the concept drawings and the natural construction?
Well, the concept is schematic design. The first plan, their draft of anything being done. And then it goes into design, development stages and further to a construction, construction plan and development and execution. So that's really who we are. So these are, keep in mind that we produced seven sketches of this rendition of part of your design to see if we can try to make that work. I also want to mention, mayor, if I may, as far as I had a conversation with Alan Passkov, as far as the lighting, that's actually shining on the.
Can you bring that slide back up?
Right. The photographs that are on the first slide. The lighting that's highlighting that platform is a temporary lighting. That's why they're so bright. I requested from Alan and 3TC, as far as their schematic, as far as the lighting elimination, as far as what's minimum required for that track that they need to be compliant. Those lights, those temporary lights do come down July 29th. I requested if we can do a trial run, come down before the 29th to see exactly our benefit on what we actually can, are going to see on the 29th.
Can you bring that image back up on the screen?
Should I respond to that or not?
Can you bring the image of the lights?
First, the first photograph.
First one you have, yeah.
And if you can load up.
Right, so the brightness, the brightness of the lights is for temporary persons?
Well, I want to make a comment. It's a temporary platform. The lights on the temporary platform.
Part of it's a temporary platform.
That temporary platform will be removed.
And that will remove some lights.
No, all those lights are going to be.
No, but if you talk, there's a fellow, Bruce suggested we have to respond. There's a fellow, Riley.
Yes, well, John Riley is in the.
We're talking about Riley.
Asking him to come up and then.
And from my understanding and reading the documents, it's not from that, but it's from the far side. The, that's actually lighting the platform on the permanent side of the lights of the station.
Right.
And it's not shielded?
And that, well, that's what Anthony Tofano, who's the L R project, had said that they're looking to try to do something about that because they realize that's where most of the brightness is coming from. That's what his take was on it.
And if you pay attention to how 3TC's handled those, they promised, 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 the end of my block, thank God they're vegetating it now. But they stripped it in 2018. They told me, Mr. Rockenbauer, we'll do it in 2019. We'll do it in 2020. We'll do it in 2021. You missed it, we can't get it done, we'll get it done. The only reason they're getting it done now, because they're going to get a bonus by finishing early. That's the only reason. They don't care what we're doing. But they promised, how long have they promised us the lights? And now, after two years, they're saying maybe it's the temporary platform? It's not the temporary platform. Believe me, it's not the temporary.
Well, it'll be nice to see if it is, but according to the final, it's not.
It would certainly help. It would certainly help.
Yeah, that would be.
I'll put it to the test and July 29th, we'll be out here looking at the tracks and the platform.
The other thing is, I believe the documents that you sent had an estimate to us, where you were taking it one step.
Yes, yes.
But some sort of design on there, there's some numbers on it. I don't really.
All the designs have an engineer's estimate associated with it, depending on how in-depth we actually take this design. If we go to the, a couple of the schematics, Plan E has an addition to the design, which is creating these south side islands to obscure the tracks. Yeah, let's start with the, yes. So on this concept, we actually, in the, in not closing the intersections, we actually created some, some areas where we can have some planting just to obscure the overlaps on the, on the intersections. And that last island over on the west side, we actually raised that to put evergreen to obscure the track on that side. And this will maintain the flow of the, the existing flow of traffic.
It does nothing for you sound wise either, as well as minimal on lighting. And this approach is basically what we've been using as we've been planning going from Beedruck down to Townes Pond Road. If you'll notice, each block when you drive up it, we put a series of Leyland cypresses in the background. So somebody that's coming up sees the blockage on that street. We've been working very closely with. And then some of the bushes are interspersed later as you go down because it's more of a drive-by. We're trying to consider what the neighbors conceding, what they can do. I, I mean, I'll look at any design. I'm a little surprised that I didn't have this before the meeting.
But it's fine. That's fine. We're trying to still enhance, enhance the landscape and create more landscaping and working with the existing structure. Try not to reduce the parking, keep the main parking there. And these are all concepts. For example, just a budget estimate on that, it is $260,000 just to do this work.
But there is 1.6 million dollars.
There is 1.6 available on community funds, which we will not lose. We have that until the fall to execute that amount if we use that money. So there's no rush on this. We have to really study it.
The MTA has agreed with you for what they're telling me. It's the same dollar you're talking. The farmer seems to think that we should be.
Maybe, I'm not sure who's saying that.
I'm going to talk to the MTA. Ralph Swaz is speaking to the MTA.
I was at meeting with Passkov, Trustee Chester and Mr. Rockenbauer of Midland last week. And I think he's confirming, maybe I'll talk to Mr. Moore about this. But he told us that the community funds should be available up to a year after they leave the project. So I think the real push from the village's standpoint is, if you're going to pave in the fall, after Labor Day, we want them to do the work for us and just have them leave, then we have to go back and rip it up. Which is going to cost us more money. And what's community fund or not, it's just, no reason to do it twice if we're going to have done once. But I think the funding issue.
It's a burden to the neighbors. People are living with us and it's a nightmare.
I'm just giving you the facts that I just said.
Ralph, if I could, the false point, promises made but not kept. I think what we need to do is get whatever we can in writing on the words that they give you. Because based on the history that we have with these folks.
And so we're working on multi-powerless tracks here.
Yeah.
No, I'm attentive to the railroad. We're working on identifying the community fund date, you know.
Yeah.
I think it's in the future.
Yeah.
But sooner we'll find that out. Mrs. Passkov said it, but we should confirm with Mr. Tofano. And Mr. Moore has contacts with community fund people. We're working on designs, alternate designs, because we're not sure, you know, trying to solve the problem of the lighting.
Yeah.
And always, Mr. Rockenbauer, we're trying to solve that problem, the corridors. But changing traffic patterns does have consequences. And there is a, there is a county intersection just east of Nassau Boulevard. So, you know, we're talking about movement of cars and people around those areas. So I don't think there's one solution there. So the alternative is just for us to see there are other ways. I don't think we have to pick one tonight. I think there might be a combination of the things. And we don't, I think also with considerations in the original design, and I'm not up here counting now, but we don't want to lose any parking spaces either. We're going to reduce the parking spaces because, you know, when you make changes, you might have unforeseen consequences, you know. You're focused on one problem, you create a new one. So that's what the engineers were playing with. They took Mr. Rockenbauer's on and said, how many different ways can we slice this? And I talked to the engineer about this this morning and he said, Ralph, there's, there's not unlimited, but there's a lot, there's a lot of variations. But you start combining pieces of each of the plans.
Sure. And I was going to ask you on the parking lot on the 711 side, on the north side, do we own that parking lot?
Is that yours? I'm not sure. That might be in the town of North, I don't think that's in ours. Yes, on Garden City. We own the houses down by, to the west of that.
There's no permits.
Houses, flooding, training are.
Right, that's correct.
But I don't think the parking lot is, I think that's. The houses are.
So just thinking out loud, can you find out who owns it? And if, is there a possibility of reformatting that parking lot to allow for more parking? I don't know. Is that something to look into?
I'm sure it's maximized now. Is this, I can't imagine they.
Okay. Okay, great.
It's maxed out now, Tom. It has been for years, really. Worse so now during the construction.
Because I lived on the other side, so I only had to walk across the street.
Those spaces that are on the, on the south side, there doesn't seem to be any control in terms of who can park there and who can't. I mean, there is permit in some areas, but other.
There's permits and right now, Commissioner Jackson probably can help us a little bit. I actually have to figure out the signs right now. I don't know if the contract has changed or how it happened, but you cannot tell where to park. Other than the, because there's one sign that says parking with permit only this way. And the other way it says no parking at all. I have that drawing, I have this slide if you want to see it. I thought that was going to be a subject, but if you want to see it, I can bring it up. It's something that has to be corrected.
Yeah, Commissioner, can you answer that? Thanks.
Sure. Some of the signs were moved. What we're waiting for is what the final configuration would be. And then we can figure out, you know, from the old traffic permission, where those signs should go. And also maybe several pictures. That's, that no parking area right in front, that was always designed for pickup. When you have no parking, you're allowed to pick up packages and people. And that's really what it was designed for. And then once you pass it, it goes into permit only, you know, along the curb as well as those spots. But then you have no stopper, so that's, that's designed for no women at all. But the no parking is for pickup and drop off packages. That's a lot by law.
And you need a permit for those spots that are like near the trees?
Yes, so the indented spots is definitely a permit. And then after, well, now it's the second walkway out, that's all permit. But again, the signs are all, we're going to have to replace them all back. We went by, we found some signs against the fence and everything else. But once we get back, once we figure out what we're going to do, we have to get those fences, those signs in.
Another highlight really of the parking that we're talking about is, rather than the parallel parking, we have to pull another 90. We're now talking about angling the parking. I think that's been universal agreement with everybody.
Yes, that's been discussed, yes. But with that, keep in mind with that angled parking, it does increase the length of the parking space.
Yes.
So Paul, first of all, thanks for all your volunteerism on this and your team. I mean, it's phenomenal. And I also thank, you know, Trustee Chester and the mayor for their perseverance on this. We've come a long way. One of the things I was going to ask, which you and I talked about, and I think you addressed, as you're heading, if you close off the road from Houston Road going to the training tracks on Main, you know, you're going to look at, which you, I think you presented, there'll be an opportunity for those people who live east of Wellington to Nassau Boulevard, that they can make a turn, which Kathy Oro brought up.
Yeah, we actually copied the design of what you have coming down by the pool. We can go up again if you show on one of the slides.
Yeah, I was just curious, like.
I think our police commissioner suggested we add a stop sign as well and some signs there.
Yeah, because you just worked, the commissioners live on Houston there, on the corner.
Yes, they're talking about sliding around that first, the first round, sliding around, making a left. I just, there's a lot of room there and it's angled, so I thought a stop sign or a yield. I think a stop sign is better. This way, but you have room to put three or four bars, bring back up and then it's a safe transition. There's pretty decent room there and you can still keep a safety zone in my eyes.
I think one of the main reasons we're here is to try and get it to move forward. I mean, the landscape is beautiful and it's getting better and it's going to be even better down the line. And if this is to happen and move forward, we're going to be a lot happier as a community.
So Kathy, are you happy with that?
I'm watching more areas. We're just showing this one, but you know, like Park Road has a lot going on. We've met there and there's improvements that are all coming and it's going to be in the future money as well. And we have to ask for the money to start something.
Yeah, so Mrs. Oro can make a left turn now and.
What name?
Mrs. Oro can now make a left-hand turn and head towards.
I've talked to so many neighbors that say they do it right now, but I don't want to get into that.
You're there from Brooklyn.
No one obeys that crosshatch. People drive around there all day long. That's illegal right here. Yeah, but nobody takes this. But that's illegal.
I have. I have a question. And thank you for all, all the work you've done. And I think we appreciate how well received and interested the community is in the plan that would improve, you know, expands the grainway there. I had spoken with Ralph at one point because of the concern with the timeline and the roadwork in the fall. And we have one meeting left in August. So I know Ralph, you had said something about you were unsure of possibility that we may need a traffic consultant or not. My thought would be, if we want to shoot for this plan that Paul has put forth, what do we need to do? And I'm a little concerned that we're doing other drawings unless we know of some obstacle with the plan that we have all these residents' signatures on, residents who live right there, that would give a much better shielding of the station.
And so I called Craig Manning, who's doing a lot of work for the village for traffic calming and the Craig Manning Road Diet. I'm sorry, the Heath lab and Road Diet. And I asked them to take a look at this. Basically, I sent them your dories, Mr. Rockenbauer. They all have these other ones. I just asked them how they felt about, would we need a full traffic study? Because there's a county intersection just to the east and we are closing off a road. We're changing the road dynamics now, as the commissioner mentioned. And some of the dories show, we could put a stacking lane there with a stop sign. So they didn't think it would be part of a full traffic study. They actually referred to it as a toe dip study. I haven't got anything in writing from them though.
Yeah, because we had talked about that the other day at Greenwich. And are they going to do?
Actually, there's Craig Manning on the phone. Actually, there's Craig Manning on the phone, is on the Zoom this evening. Michael, you there?
I am on the line.
So Michael, you've been listening to the conversation here. To trustee Flanagan's question, do you have any input that would offer some guidance to us as we contemplate these proposals?
I guess the, I think there are one or two sketches on here that are different than what was originally shown to us. So I think the, as Frank had said, you know, he mostly just wanted to see, we want to see if any of these are going to impact that intersection at Nassau Boulevard and Franklin Avenue. I think that before being able to kind of weigh in, it would be helpful to know if you want us to be looking at multiple and comparing one to the other or just looking at one. But again, I think that it could be a very quick little investigation.
Yeah, the ones I sent you were the only ones that were finished last week when I gave to you. But I can...
No, no, I understood. I just realized that there were other ones that were put up there tonight. So I don't know if it is, is what's on the screen right now going to be the final one?
No, that was just one of the concept, this one's concept A, which does show that turnaround. The one on the screen is closest to, I think, Mr. Rothenbeller's vision, where maintenance the flow and Houston's closed off and lights are blocked. So I think, and we also create a turning lane for stacking because that Maryland is so wide, east of Houston, that we have a turning lane as the commissioner's. That also includes 10 additional parking spaces on the angle.
So maybe you can look at all of them. Like what you did and what Paul did.
And at this point, also, I also want to mention to the question, we all have one more meeting. The board can convene at any time to make a decision. So if we have a meeting on the 18th, you can have one on the 23rd, or you can have one before that. So you're not restricted to the meetings that are on the schedule if you have distance to conduct.
Ralph?
Well, we're all here right now. So if we have a direction, knowing the timeline, it would seem that we should plan.
I think the fear is that 3TC, we're not sure. You know, we're never sure of their moves. And if they decide they're going to do, you know, repaving of the roads in the fall, you know, we'd like to be prepared at that point with what we're going to do on Main Avenue.
So do we have a sense now as to the preferred plan that we'd like to get...
I think this has to be vetted with the engineers, that's a consultant, and we have to move quickly on this.
Yeah.
The other thing is next week is a critical week, based on what I heard, right? So when they take those lights down, right, we'll have to take another look at this.
Yeah, definitely.
Right, yeah?
Great.
Because that's a contributing source of illumination. Whether you like it or not. Temporary, those temporary lights are glaring. They're high pressure sodium lamps, right? It's like putting like sunshine in a bottle. So again, they did that on purpose because of the temporary platform. They're doing work on the tracks, recovering all the basics. This is what I heard from Mr. Paschkov. So I said, let's get those lights down so we can see what the effect is to the village.
But even if the lights are dimmer, I think...
They'll also be eliminated. They'll be eliminated.
But you'd still have a sound barrier.
You'll still play along the track.
We'll have to go back to the original light levels that you had on the prior track and the platform.
It's not even, the platform wasn't that far down.
No, it's...
Do you want to, would you like to speak to this?
We have to step right here.
I'm concerned with the delay, delay.
There's no delay. There's no delay.
Hi, this is Don Casper, living at 223 Houston Road. Has anyone here gone and actually looked at those lights on those platforms? The lights that shine to the south are on the north side of the track and they are part of the permanent platform. They are not temporary lights. The temporary lights aren't the problem. When they take those temporary lights down, we're still going to be blinded by the lights that shine to the south from the north side.
Me, correct.
I'm certain.
Oh, okay, you're lying.
But I'm with them.
Okay, I understand. And I understand.
My second question is, why is this such a problem to resolve and get done?
We're working on it. We're trying to...
Yeah, I was here a month ago. No progress. Thank you.
One second, Bill, before you come up, if you don't want... John, would you like coming up and what we discussed with the lights and your suggestion, which I gave to Anthony Tavano when he's still working on it?
Okay, so you're correct that the problem is the lights, they're on an angle. And so you can see it from Stratford. And that's predominantly the problem. Just one, in the environmental impact study that MTA produced for this project, they specified horizontal light pollution as environmental impact. As trustee Brian says, they say a lot of things. But they actually specified in their environment impact study that horizontal light pollution is an issue. So I think the village would have a very strong case. If they don't resolve this problem, it would receive a violation. And as the MTA would be responsible to resolve it as a state agency.
Yes.
One of the solutions we came up with is that you have the annual lights. So if you could drop a barrier, you block it.
Let's receive a map.
Right, right, but that's, but to make this problem should happen at the station, right? Because they specify horizontal light pollution as environmental. They were specifying. So they have to solve the problem.
Yeah, we're working with the MTA. We're working with the 3TC contractor. We've made this comment numerous times, that the lights can be baffled, they can be screened, so that we don't have horizontal light pollution to the residents. We've had this comment and this conversation, I would say, how many, about five times already?
Easily, easily, yeah.
Right, so I'm trying to push them as much as I can. They told me to wait till next week. This is what I heard, to wait till next week when they take down the temporary platform and they take down the temporary lights.
And then next week, they're going to...
And then they're going to address it, I think.
Right, and next week will know if that actually is a viable solution.
Yeah, and they want to do it on the 29th. I said, no, let's do it sooner, right? We can turn the switch off. Pretty simple. Turn the switch off on those lights. You'll see it right now. You'll see the effect. And then we'll know what to do, you know, in terms of a baffling system of some kind.
Right, did I cover what you wanted me to cover?
I'm sorry?
Did I cover what you wanted?
Yeah, you definitely did. And Anthony Tavano has that. He didn't make any mention about taking the temporary lights off, but obviously Paschkov did. And that'll be a good indication.
If 3TC was sincere, if 3TC was sincere, every weekend when they take the tracks out of service because they're doing construction, they could have simply shut the lights down for us any night they want and let us see it. They're not being sincere. You've talked to them for two years. You're finally happy after two years, something in writing? And they're just going to deny it? Even if the light... Why not beautify the area?
We have an agreement with the Loyal and Royal, right? They're fighting all the battles we wanted. They're fighting more than we wanted, right? So that we made some progress on. So I think we'll take the next step. Let's take it step by step and we'll attack this issue next week. By Friday of next week, we'll know what to do. Then we can pick a plan. We can develop that plan. Engineering can give us construction drawings and then you can build it. That's the process. I can make it as simple.
I, all right, so I have one question.
And I think, excuse me, it has to go to public hearings, if I'm not mistaken. Am I right, Mr. Tishford? Is this a special to go to public hearing?
I'm not sure.
Change?
According...
I think you do one.
She's designed for a road.
Okay, can I have a chip?
So that would make all the more reason for urgency here. Although I was advised by prior council that this type of change wouldn't actually require public care. But we can get more and discuss that further. But the question I have for the group, because I know we have a lot of the supporters of the plan here, is if the lighting is somewhat diminished, which we understand is a possibility, is this still the landscaping plan you would want? Because I've gone in the area during the day and envisioned this and thought it would still be an improvement. But what do the residents there think? Because if you would still want the same plans, we don't really have to wait. There could be shields in the future. A lot of things could happen in the future.
We're not modifying the vegetation to make it less, we're making it better. We're doing the opposite direction.
Hi, I'm Bill Lucano and I live at 223 Houston Road. I spoke last time, I guess it was last month. And we met with Bruce Chester by the station. We checked everything out. And it's been referred to as the Rothenbeller Plan. I've got to give Paul so much credit. He whipped a crew into shape and I led that crew. We canvassed an area of four blocks. And I think we got about 130 some odd signatures. And then he had some extra people do that in previous days, I guess. And they got a bunch of signatures. So what I'm getting to really is that the residents said, God bless you. I can't believe you're doing this. Thank you so much. Because we've been living with this for four years. From the monster poles, the noise, the whole stuff. So breaking it down with the lighting, that's another issue. We hope that's going to be mitigated. But it's also the sound. So I just want everybody to understand, if you can call one of the, any one of the schematics up. The, if you look from, I guess Nassau Boulevard all the way to Meadbrook, I don't think you can see it here. But there will be no sound barrier, like a wall, like a big gray wall that's eight, 10 feet high, whatever it is, and that goes all the way to Tanner's Palm Road. And that is on the other side of Houston Road. And that goes all the way down for several blocks. We don't have that in this four block area. We have like a four foot metal wall that just reaches where a chain link fence would reach to block the sound coming off the tracks. So I just want you to know that. You can't see that on an overhead schematic like that. We do need the traffic flow to be one way, you know, from Meadbrook Road or Wellington, Houston going towards Nassau Boulevard. You cannot have two ways in there by the big island. We do want the big island because number one, we're connecting the islands to give more spaces. We're connecting the islands to block a lot of that light. The station proper is pretty much on Houston and Wellington right there. That is the brightest part of the station. So I think that's very important to have that big island there. We're going to have a lot of greenery. If you want to flip to another page, more, keep forward, forward. No, that's backwards, the other way. I want to see blueprints. Because I made those, I know it. Yeah, that one, I like the best, but I'm not averse to the one that's similar to that. The island there is fine because you're doubling the greenery against the tracks and you have that island. Both would contain a greenery. I'm not into adding little patches of, you know, break up the parking area if it's parallel parking. I do like the way the crosshatch is there at Nassau Boulevard. I don't think that will affect the traffic flow really. And there's a flow around the island and now it's legal. You can't drive there across the yellow crosshatch line. So that's legal right there. So that is my favorite design. I think that life blocks a lot of light, whatever the light turns out to be. I think that blocks a lot of the sound with having the greenery there in combination of the metal dropdowns. Bruce, about four feet, you said four or five feet? And that's really important. What we also can't see are traffic control devices. We can see crosswalks, but very important to have a stop sign at Wellington Road and Main Avenue there too. Because as you can see, it's a straight chute and then it kind of angles down. And cars coming down there and they're not, they're not driving 30 miles an hour. They're stepping on a little bit, 42, 45 miles an hour. And then they can't see the light if it's red or green or anything. So they start to brake. So when we have crosswalks there, we need a stop sign to be safe. So they stop. The traffic's going unabated from Tanner's Palm Road to Nassau Boulevard. There's not one stop sign. There's a playground down the block, we'll get used to that. But I just wanted to speak in terms of seeing blueprints. I'm not an architect, but I did some hard work for Paul. And not for nothing, this is what the residents signed when they saw that. They said, you know what, we're into that. That would work for us. We like that. And the reason we tilted the parking spaces, and I know they're a little bit longer, I don't know how much longer, maybe two feet, a foot? But it also allows people to back out of the spaces and have a shorter turn to go. So it's safer with people coming around. So that's really what I wanted to say. If there's, you know, if anybody else wants to speak, thank you.
Can I just respond to you for a second?
Sorry?
Yeah.
As someone who is new to the board and has not lived this as much as you have, but I still think that we are all saying the same thing. And can I break it down as follows and see if we agree? And it's sort of like, how do we get to Grandma's house? Because there's a couple of different ways, but that's the objective. And that is, there will be change. That is the consensus that I think I have heard. What will that change be? And when will that change occur? So those are the three steps that from my point of view, we need to address.
Exactly.
As far as the first one, there will be change. I'm all in favor of change. I've seen a number of different plans. I have commented with the village because I like to play. And I've made my suggestions and I have my choice. I'm not an expert, no degrees in parkingology. So there will be change. Since we had a number of different plans, we have to coalesce on what plan we plan on implementing. We then give that plan to the engineers, the architects and the building department to say, we're going from step A to step B. So what that change will look like is up to the department. Then once they have the opportunity to coalesce and have an actionable plan, there is the question of when we have it implemented. Obviously, there has been discussion that we'd like to have it implemented sooner versus later. But the redoing the work of the railroad so that we can pave a road to redo a road is objectionable. Unfortunately, from your point of view, it sounds nebulous. But I don't believe that it is. I think that we all are in agreement on the three steps that we need to take. However, if you want to have a stop sign, I would prefer the police department chime in, that the traffic people chime in. Because once we put the roads in place, I would really prefer that they stay there forever and that we don't get to redo it. So let me reassure you from my point of view, and that is, those are the three steps that we're looking for. Obviously, the sooner we can coalesce, the better. Do I think that a road will be built before September, October? Not likely. But the answer is yes. I have, and I believe the rest of the board has heard you. And we too want to implement and resolve this issue for a number of different reasons. Thank you. I appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Hi, Bill Daley, went on New Six Rockbury Road. Thank you all very much for your consideration for the hard work that Paul's done. I've been helping support the team on a voluntary basis. Talked to neighbors as well on Roxbury. Certainly, the lighting issue, we hope will be debated by some of the changes that come about. However, I do echo the comments by a couple of neighbors that this does kind of emanate from the, from the north side platform. We'll see. I think there are kind of two things I'd like to address what trustee Flanagan raised. Is that there are two points really here. One is that it is an issue of the lighting, but it's also the sound and the aesthetics. So back when we had the original platform, having been a neighbor on Roxbury Road for 35 years, we had a strong buffer of both deciduous as well as evergreen trees that kind of buffered us from that platform. And so I think the concern here is that we were looking for both kind of the sound, the light, but also the aesthetics. So having taller trees, what I understand the planting plan as it currently is, the trees do not go up to the platform level. And I think by looking at that as well, putting taller trees in whatever configuration we have, whether it's one of these green setbacks or something close to the platform, I think would go a long way. So that would be some of my thoughts, some of the comments I've received from some of my neighbors. So thank you for your consideration.
Daley, I made the point that we've enlisted the services. The resident was a landscape architect, Julie Peterson. And she's also given her opinion on the landscaping that's proposed by the Loyal and Royal. She's rejected it. proposed by the Long Island Railroad. She's rejected it. And she wants us to have lower plantings in this particular area to create not only a visual buffer, but a sound buffer. Because of taller trees, obviously, the growth begins at about eight foot above ground, and the sound's going to go right through. So she wants a combination of both larger trees and lower shrubbery to shield the sound. So I think she's onto something.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you. Well, agenda items still.
Mayor, Mayor John.
Right. Few observations. When all of this started, the fiasco, I call it, I counted 155 trees with X's on them that had been cut down for this project, Tanner's Pond to my corner at NASA Boulevard. 155. I can remember asking Bob Bowe, the prior trustees, and I said, have any of you driven down Maine? And Bob Bowe said, oh, yeah, I got a really nasty phone call from my wife. So they at least were aware at one point. Second thing, the little, from the mailbox and the little scoop around between the grassy area and the striped area, that sounds like a great idea because we're not breaking the law, which I did every day. Thank you.
Commissioner, close your ears. Close your ears.
Listen, that's where the police cars used to park to get people. And the extended white cab trucks from Third Track Committee would park their trucks there. So I figured, hey, I'm at least paying taxes to use that thoroughfare. July 29th, we won't hold our breath. Do the blue, as I call them, landing lights be removed also?
We're not sure.
You know, when that first started, because I have a perfect view of all of it, I used to equate it to, I don't know if anybody remembers the cartoon The Jetsons?
Yes.
And I thought, oh, my God, we're going to see The Jetsons land right there. Now, the argument that the Long Island Railroad was telling you, Mr. Mayor, about the night work, if I remember correctly, when they do night work, they also bring in more lights. So the idea that all these offensive lights are there to protect their guys is a lot of hot wash. Not criticizing anybody who brought around that petition, nobody asked me to sign it. I'm not offending, don't worry, because Paul knows my feeling. And not only that, I will concede to, to closing Houston Road, as long as we are guaranteed that we do not have two-way traffic south of the grassy area, the parking area. Secondly, thirdly, fourthly, whatever number I'm up to, when, when I drive around legally, because I'm coming from King Colton, so I have to drive around, and I tried to read the signs along the curb, and the last time I read those signs, it was permanent parking between Nassau and Houston, or at least the signs that I could quickly read as I was driving. And someone mentioned, I think it was you, Charlie, in the newspaper article, about the generator on the Wellington, wherever it is.
Mead, Meadbrook, I think.
Oh, wherever. It's a large metal edifice.
Yeah.
When my neighbor and I started walking during COVID, we went up and asked the two men who were working there. And they told us that that housed a generator because the platform was going to be heated. Now, somebody is agreeing?
Well, they do heat the platforms off the snow. They might have water through the platform, so the snow doesn't stick there off the shelf.
Well, I remember the day when the MTA had a whole crew that would go up there and shovel. Because I have lived on that corner since 1979, so I've seen it all. I just ask, I know my neighbors on Houston and Wellington, and they all complain, they at least have a wall. Originally, if I remember correctly, and it would be our friends over in the West, they were told that their wall would go up to cover like the wheels of the train. So you wouldn't hear the noise from the trains running on the tracks. Now, I know I have seen the moments at some time, but I bet if you ask the people who live right backed up near the tracks, they would, they would agree with me. I don't know what's going to happen. I mean, I was watching the elevator working today. I was just in my living room, and I could see the elevator going up and down. My neighbor tried it out, so it does work. Again, hold my breath on that because we know how the MTA takes care of the escalators. So, you know, handicap people, I hope you can use a ramp and have good brakes on your wheelchairs. I don't know what kind of a wall, if we will have a wall, from Houston to Nassau Boulevard. I can't remember those plans. I have them somewhere in a big file that I probably deliberately forgot where I put. Yeah, so that's all I have to say. Thank you for your attention.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Anybody else? Comments on the agenda items? Anyone on Zoom? Come on, hold on.
We'll change the subject. I'm sorry. I wanted to spend a little more time on this. Steve Alardi, Meadow Street, item 15 for the library children's room. Is that the total amount of the renovation budget for the children's room? That's the all-in cost moving forward? 963, 125? Is that the all-in cost for the full renovation of the children's room project?
So, the, there was a, there was a, an estimate done by the engineer H2M. They did a cost estimate based on best information they had. And there are some items that are not included in this number. This is for the construction, the HVAC, but there are some other items like the furniture for the library, the, it's off the state contract. I talked to Ariane this evening. I think she's here. She was here. Yes. So at the time, they were holding off until this moment in time. So, so I don't know the cost of the furniture right now that was selected. There's some artwork. I'm not sure how hard or soft that number is. And I believe there's also the outstanding issue of the circulation desk change order, which has to be pressed down. So there are other elements that will go into this. The full, the full amount of money available for this at this point is $1,298, $624. And some money has been spent out of that already for the H2M team. So I do anticipate that, since we don't have all the final numbers in design yet, that if this is awarded, I think it's a commitment by the board to see this through, but I think there will be some adjustments at the end. And I believe the monies that might be needed, I don't know what the amount will be, but I think as we discussed tonight, between the Andrew Firehouse and these other capital projects, there will be available funding for the board to apply to whatever variance might exist.
I understand there's, there's always other money to grab, I guess, from someplace. But this gives the appearance that this is the budget for the children's room renovation, and it's, and I think more like 1.3, 1.4 million when you go to the all-in costs and, you know, that's all I was saying.
The budget is 1.3 shy of $2,000. So it's, I mean, we're in the ballpark. The thing is that there are some unknowns. And every time this, this project had, this project started off at $600,000, then fire laws came in, then the HVAC wasn't properly identified. There were other capital processes, the PA system, they have folded into the fire system. So the furniture costs, I'm not even sure if they were finally decided on at some point, but, but the board has risen to the occasion each time, both this board and fire boards, to modify things. We had COVID, which is a renaissance in the works. We had supply chain issues. All those things are impossible to, to ascertain. So I think, I didn't speak to the mayor about this when these numbers came in, and, and it was decided to put this on the agenda so we can get this project moving forward, understanding that there'll probably be a variance at the end, either positive or negative, to some degree, which I think the board will address that point while we know the numbers.
The other item I wanted to mention was, there was a lot of discussion about all these different projects coming in under what the estimate was and having all these millions of dollars, you know, available now. I don't know how, how we, we get those estimates, but maybe the estimates aren't accurate enough. And I don't think it's really fair to say we saved all this money if it's just money that we didn't spend for a project that we were going out to bid for, or however we were paying. If, if, you know, I have $10,000 to go out and buy a car, and I find a car I like for $8,000, I didn't save $2,000. I just spent $2,000 less.
Right.
So it's not like, you know, it's, I just think the wording of it really isn't right. I don't think we're saving the money. We're just not spending.
So that's, that's a fair point. But nonetheless, when we do a budget, we start a budget process, we're working, we're working with an 18-month window. We're dealing with the last six months of the fiscal year we're in and 12 months looking forward. We're doing this, especially the last two budgets, in a COVID environment, which has disturbed supply chains, delayed projects, the cost increases. Now we have, and we're on the back end now that everyone's, you know, we're not free entirely from that COVID pandemic, there's a, there's a, so much work going on. It's hard to get services. So we are, and we like the square footage, I repoint you in this building. At the time, there were some, there were some flaws in the building that had to be repaired. But when we did the estimate, we used the square footage of the entire brick face to come up with that estimate so we wouldn't have to undersorts it. So, but we actually got the people in here to look at it. We realized that it could be a lesser project. So we didn't inflate it all officially. We came up with the best numbers we could. Also, we had a repointing project, but we didn't have, and we had a roof project. They were separate projects. We did them, we packaged them together, bid them out because they need to be done in sequence, and we also, but we get a better price. So it's kind of hard to measure where you gained, where you didn't. But the, your point's well taken, but these prices are fair estimates given. And so the, the thing is that they will be available if a shortfall exists in the library. And if they're not used, the cash projects, it goes back into surplus, the bonded projects, when Miss Boo gets around the bonding some of these projects, she can bond less. So it's, I mean, and we also, one of the things we changed a few years ago was we're using the New York State Contract Reporter now. So rather than putting an admin guard to say news and call up some vendors, we're putting this out globally. I mean, we're getting contacts from the whole tri-state area, so there's much more competition. And by getting more prices, we see where they cluster. So we know we have the right number, too. So it's this process.
If I could, if I could say something, having done a lot of budgets, Steve, you have to allocate dollars, and you have to do it based on what you pull in, based on what you know today. And it is, I can tell you that whenever I do a budget, when I meet with the CFO, he always says, you've come in under the budget. So that's, that's the best way you can do, you know, when you're, when you're putting a budget together, you do the best you can on what you think the estimates are going to be. But you allocate the dollars, and hopefully you hit underneath the budget, and therefore we have a surplus of what we originally planned.
Understood. I was just questioning the terminology of saying how much we saved.
Yeah, I like that.
Saving, we came under the estimate, which is great. We got lower bids, which is great. Maybe we can go to the air conditioning in here because I'm dying tonight. But that's what, you know, I was referring to, the terminology of saving all this money.
Well, the reason I brought it up, just to close and point out, as I mentioned, Trustee Deegan and Treasurer Wu and I have been meeting, you know, weekly or bi-weekly for the last 12 months or so. And, and during the budget process, it was brought up by residents that there's a lot of money budgeted and the projects weren't moving. We had some losses in engineering department. We had delays. The thing is that, the reason I brought up the variance in numbers tonight, because we awarded five projects worth $1.4 million tonight, but the allocated budget was much more significant. So I was trying to make the point that, that while we can't dispense with the unused funds, say, because there might be change orders, that, that the rep, the number of representative things that we lost tonight is actually some of the outstanding dollars that's sitting on the plate when these projects get resolved. It's not just that money that 1.4 was meant, it's the 1.5 that we disbanded. So that number's going to drop much faster. So, and that was really for Trustee Deegan. I, I had the two passes. I wanted to see that we're racing to the bottom here to get that number down. And because of these, these good prices, that when we get there fast, because, because some of the money is just not going to be needed.
Well, goodness, goodness is without a budget, without wasting time or money. So I think you're doing a very good job, Ralph.
Yeah, I mean, similarly to your comment about using the nomenclature of saving money, I truly believe that the actual emphasis should be on the process of getting the work done, getting it done efficiently, and doing it for the most reasonable or lowest cost possible. Whether we say we are saving money or under budget, I don't think that is the emphasis that we should put on any of these projects. And that is, is the village getting what they're paying for? And are they moving forward on the projects? But yeah, I mean, saving money is sort of like, my wife said, something's on sale, so I got two. I never quite appreciated that understanding.
This is being recorded.
Anyone else in the audience? Anybody else on Zoom, please?
I'd like, I'd kind of like to circle back because we have all the residents who came here. And I think we're a little bit, you know, left this hanging on whether we're pursuing Paul Rothenbiller's plan in some form of connecting the islands in order to enhance the, not only the impact of the lights, but also the sound and the visual impact of the tracks. And I would, individually, I'm very much in support of this. And I would like, I don't know if others have voiced their opinion, but I think it would be nice if we could give some assurances that we are going to pursue. Things have come up tonight that could be significant delays, that we're going to go forward with pursuing the traffic, whatever that type of a study was that you thought we might need, see if we are going to need a public hearing and move forward pursuing that. And I think if we're unable to do that for some reason, we can fall back on the two islands. But I don't, that would be my thought. And I know some others feel the same way, but I'll let you voice.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with that. Trustee Torino, you mentioned the likelihood of this being done September, October, not likely. I think it has to be likely, certainly by October. I think the residents have pulled up with enough for four years of this nonsense. And I think we, we certainly can go in that direction. We will have the money from the Community Benefit Fund to do it. We have the engineering staff that can put this together. And I think we have to get going on it. Okay. I think you reiterated my plan, right? That I said, we're going to have a public hearing, the other thing is all, and before we be building, I think I said this in the last meeting. So you're reiterating exactly what, what my outline of the schedule was. Nothing has changed. We just have to go through the process, give them a chance to go through the process, and things will develop, I guarantee.
So we're going, going to be getting the opinion, the traffic opinion on connecting the islands?
We'll try to expedite it. And if we don't need that opinion, we can expedite it. And if we don't need a public hearing, we can expedite it. So that's the way I would pursue it. The engineers are ready to move. Once we have a plan, once the concept is agreed upon, that will be agreed upon by the engineers and the village staff. Then we go forward, get the drawings drawn up, goes out to where it's going to build it, and it'll get done. That's the process.
We know the engineers can draw plans for two islands or for a connected island. So I think that's more of a forward direction here.
Right. And we'll discuss that at some meeting. We can have a special meeting just to discuss that. Once we have all the information. That's what I'm recommending. You can have a special meeting and get that done. That's what I'm recommending, you can have a special meeting and get that done.
Simple, that's fine.
Right? Let's go forward.
Sounds good.
Any more comments on agenda items?
Agenda items?
Go ahead, Judy.
Go ahead, Judy. I, Brittany, I'm sorry, I just, I'm trying to educate myself. When we were just talking about, sorry, about the budget and surplus and capital budget, et cetera, how is the, how is the tax rate of investment calculated? So if we, if we project, for example, on the capital budget that, you know, a project costs like we just did, a million dollars and it comes in at $500,000, is my tax rate calculated on the million dollars or on the 500,000 actual spend?
I think the question was, actually, if you can mute your line, Judy, we're getting a lot of feedback, but I think.
Sorry, sorry.
I think the question Judy had, those two, and Irene would probably be the one, did you hear it, Irene? Okay.
Yes, so Judy, the tax rate is calculated based on the funds, the taxes allocated to capital projects, and that varies year to year, depending on how much of the capital projects will be funded through taxes and how much of that is determined to be funded via bonds. We typically try to maintain the amount that's funded through taxes stable year over year so that there would not be an impact to the tax rate increase to residents. Specifically speaking about the one project that Mr. Swazie spoke about tonight, the repointing of the village hall roof, the village hall facade, that was budgeted to be $1.5 million, but that was a project that was anticipated to be bonded. The fact that it came in at $500,000 just means that we will be bonding a lower amount. So there is no surplus, there's no tax implication, there were no taxes that were raised to, you know, raise $1.5 million. Most of the material capital projects are bonded and not funded through taxes. Does that answer your question?
Thank you. Yeah, I think so. I didn't know there was such a difference, so thank you.
Any other comments on agenda items? Anyone else?
There are you. Thank you.
Mr. The Mayor?
Well, thank you. I just want to say very quickly that I've been out of town for a few weeks. I came back and I found out about the Houston Road. I sent some emails to the mayor, Charlie and Paul, and they all got back to me very quickly and I'm very impressed with what you've done. So I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you. That's it? I was ready for the next line. Thank you. Any more comments on agenda items? Are you still on, Peter?
Yes, yes. But I did, if I can get a vote, I did like Plan A.
Very good. Thank you.
And thank you very much. Bye.
Any more comments, please?
No, just there.
All right, we'll get on to some business. I need a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 9th. Trustee Kelly will need to abstain since he's not in attendance. Do I have the first motion?
Make a motion.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 14th? Trustee O'Brien will have to abstain since he's not in attendance. First motion?
I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of June 16th? Here, Trustee Deegan will abstain since he's not in attendance. First motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Do you have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting of June 23rd, 2022? Trustees Chester, Deegan, O'Brien will all be to abstain since he's not in attendance. First motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second?
Third?
All in favor?
Aye.
We're on the formal agenda. Are there any comments on the formal agenda?
Well, obviously I'd like to thank Peter B. for his work and I'd like to welcome Colin Indigman to work here as a village council and thank you, Gary, for being here tonight.
Thank you, Gary. As I say, welcome again.
I also have here, one of my colleagues, Ariel Ronenberg, who's here as an observer so we can start providing, make sure we have appropriate backup.
Yes, I recall, she made an excellent presentation once, a few weeks ago.
Do you want to go to non-agenda items?
Just on the meat formal agenda, Jesse. Just so that the residents appreciate what the process is, it is normal that the appointment of village council, special council would occur at the organizational meeting that occurs in April. However, at the direction of the mayor, in, I believe it was January, an RFP, which is a request for proposals, was sent out to quite a few law firms to determine the process as to who would be council selected for the village. The legal committee, which is, Trustee Kelly and I, were requested to review those proposals to make a determination and recommendation. The process had to do with the established criteria of which of the prospective attorneys or firms knew the village, had a character and had the breadth of experience, the legal ability, as well as the financial wherewithal to represent the village. That selection was then presented to the full board and we are now in a motion to continue and do the selection from now until the next organizational meeting, which would be April 3, 2023. So just so that the residents know, this was an in-depth process that was directed by the mayor so that we get the appropriate attorneys for the positions and uses that they have the ability to do. There are a number of different firms and just like you just don't have one tool in your toolbox, the village has the ability to utilize the services for specific purposes, whether it be litigation, real estate, village council, or for such other purposes as we need.
Thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Torino? Now I see we finished the agenda items, we go to non-agenda items now. Oh, yes, sorry, sorry. Do you have approval of the formal agenda? Do you have a motion? First motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Then we'll go to non-agenda items. So, please, come on. I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Mayor.
Oh, the motion to approve the consent calendar, I'm sorry.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent calendar.
Oh, I wanted to talk about item 18. We can just put that on the side.
Do you want to remove that from the agenda for discussion? And approve the rest of the consent calendar?
Yes, that's my, that's the motion. We moved item 18 from the consent calendar and approved the consent calendar. Do you have a motion? First motion?
Some more?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
You want to discuss that?
Who said 18, where's 18?
18 or 17?
18, it is 18, Nassau Boulevard.
No, that's 17. The one I worked on here. I've used the Nassau Boulevard train station thousands of times. I've always considered the walls there as a dangerous decoration. I don't think they serve any function other than decorative and it's always a perilous turn, right-hand turn into that parking lot because you have no field of vision at that point. You simply have the two walls in front of you. No other parking lot in town has this kind of visual obstruction. I never knew when I was turning into that parking lot if there were children on bikes, pedestrians, commuters running through the train and slowing down that much on Nassau Boulevard was always a scary moment, but you have to slow down a lot to make the right-hand turn. I know the clay pots are not being used, it's used to sit atop these walls, but I still see these walls as a decoration that interferes with a driver's field of vision and his ability to safely turn into this parking lot. I view the walls as a dangerous decoration and I don't support anything except taking out the wall and putting in some very nice flowers and giving the drivers a full look, a full field of vision to see the parking lot as they turn into it and know what's in front of them. That's the end of my comment.
In support of Trustee Kelly, I passed by there when I saw this was on the agenda and I was really kind of curious why a wall was there, but there was only one drive-by. If at all possible, I would ask that the police commissioner make a determination as to the safety of that particular area that Trustee Kelly is referring to and come back with his recommendation as to whether it is safe or in his opinion, if there are any modifications. I don't know enough about it, I can't form an opinion, but I would appreciate additional information in order that we could all be apprised of what the condition actually is.
I'm not sure, but there might be some historical significance to those walls.
Well, I don't know anything. I think what?
Historical, yeah.
Is that significant?
Yes.
Maybe there was historical significance to the clay pots, but I don't think that's the wall. Where you put the clay pots on steps?
Yeah, I don't know the necessity of the walls myself, again, not being an architect or historian, but I think some heavy shrubbery and so forth might possibly be a better idea and less expensive. Just a thought.
Should we defer until we get permission?
Yeah, we defer. Carrie, Carrie to the next meeting.
Differ.
Yes, we'll put it on for the agenda in the next meeting if everybody agrees with that.
Yeah, sounds good.
You made the motion and we'll vote.
I so moved Carrie to the agenda for the August 18th meeting. Ignore information, right?
A second.
Mr. Mayor, with regard to the last item, which is informational only, I have read Resolution 64-2020, which was implemented by the prior, a prior board, and I question whether it is in fact the proper course for this village to rely upon. Essentially, that resolution said that if there's money budgeted, the village can go ahead and just contract it out. I am more in keeping with the Simon Says approach in which you have to ask Simon and Simon has to physically tell you, yes, you can take two steps forward. So while I have no objection to the cost and payment of the funds as outlined in the resolution, I would prefer that it be done by motion and we'll make that motion. And I also ask that village council give us an opinion as to whether 64-2020 should be rescinded. So with regard to that, item 9, informational only, I make the motion that the, that there be a resolution of the board approving the engagement of the services of H2M Architects for the amount as set forth on the board's agenda.
I'll second that.
Support it. Non-agenda items?
Yes.
Please come up.
My name is George Salem, I live on St. Paul's Place. Earlier this year, mayor trustees authorized $23,000 to be granted from village funds to the Mayor of St. Paul's Committee. The money was requested so the committee could advertise and promote the saving of the St. Paul's building. They so far have spent some of those funds via ads in the Garden City News to pay to white ads, town hall meetings and other such activities. Most such promotions are promised in coming months as we approach a late November referendum. In fact, another piece of publicity occurred in the last couple of weeks, presented by something called the Garden City New York Media. Is that, is that an organization? Yes, I haven't heard of it. Is it just, okay. And that media organization is very pro-saving the building. Myself and several other gentlemen recently formed our own committee and named it FDEM, standing for, for demolishing St. Paul's building. So I'm here today to request matching funds for our own new committee to demonstrate that the village believes in fairness and impartiality in the St. Paul's debate.
Mr. Salem?
Yes.
My suggestion is if you go to Franklin Avenue, you will see where that fund is located. An oral application to the board, to the village, for funds I do not believe will be the proper vehicle. If you will in fact submit it to the board in writing as to what you intend, all of the items in the agenda are supported by documentation. So I invite you to follow that protocol by saying who you want to hire, what you want to do with the money, and then the board will be able to put it on the agenda for examination and vote. Can you do that, sir?
I'll think about it.
Okay. So when you conclude your thought process, we'll be able to put it on the agenda and deal with it. Thank you, sir.
Did you define this New York Media?
It's a firm that's on Franklin Avenue, right next to Hensonburgs.
So it's a media organization?
Yeah, between Stewart Avenue and Seventh Street.
They have a nice.
We have to pay them what they're doing?
They submitted a, outlined a program of what they were going to do and that was the basis for the, off the authority granted by resolution to pay their bill. Yes?
So would it be okay to ask for the disclosure of the money that's being spent to this media organization?
If you submit an FOI request to the village clerk, I am certain that a response will go to you.
As far as what I want to do with the money, I've stated what I want to do with the money.
Well, quite candidly, as much as I trust you, I'm not sure that the auditors, when they come from the state, will say, "George is a really nice guy, thank you for giving him 23 grand." It doesn't happen that way. We will in fact have to get it in writing. We will, in fact, have to get it in writing, followed by the backup information as to what you intend to do, where you intend to make the payments, and all of the expenditures of the funds. All of the members of the executive class, executive for the village have to give the trustees the backup for those items that are on the agenda. The village is not in a position, or the board is not in a position, to authorize the expenditure of monies not on a request. So you give it to us in writing, you give us the backup, what you intend to do, and the board will put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other comments on non-agenda items? Anybody? Everybody on Zoom, come on.
Anybody answer?
Yeah, I just had a question. For the, over the last month, the lights on Stewart Avenue and White Hall, as well, the streetlights on Stewart Avenue and White Hall, as well as Brockton and Stewart Avenue have been out. So I was wondering if this would bring it to your attention, hopefully you get that resolved.
Yes, we do have a village engineer working on, trying to get those lights back on. So we are aware of it, and we're addressing it.
Anybody on Zoom have any comments?
Okay, do you have any comments? Okay, let me see that, let me make a motion. I move to Jerry.